And then what was the other CM back country was training.
Yeah, they had that same.
Ever paid attention to our unemployment insurance to see that that goes through I E C.
I didn't know that it did either, but.
That's good. Why are we paying I E C for something? Thank you for that response.
See, Carolyn, short sleeve day.
Yeah. Had my windows open at home this weekend.
Did you guys have any more questions for Rita?
I guess I'm just back to this snow plowing. I don't know that there was any substantial snow in March. And we paid at least two bills. So is at nip just a consistent one fifty a month? Is it a contract?
Um, it would be best for you to speak to the department heads about their contracts because they do have individual ones. They are all all through different departments.
Okay.
Okay.
If you have questions, let us know.
Yep. I think the at nip one is um or the annex.
Right.
It's not removal.
Yeah, and they did have snow removal down there. Yep.
I don't, I don't remember doing it here in Cascade.
Oh, okay.
Really?
Uh, man, we had some, we had some significant snow in March a couple of times, but uh.
Okay.
Yeah, I know. One of them is at the, at the annex here in Cascade. And then I think the other one is Parks and Rec still.
When you guys have questions on those, you get, I shoot Doug and Rita a question or an email just right when I'm doing it. And then Monday morning I get a response. So they get a chance to look at the invoices. That works pretty well for me anyway.
Yep. I, I didn't see anything in here, you know, board orders, you know, junior college, all, all, all of it looked good to me.
There's two junior college?
There's just one.
No, one junior college, two board orders.
I guess there was one good snow in March, but just.
All right. If there are no more questions, I take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims board orders in junior college for April twenty eighth.
I get removed in second. All in favor?
Aye. Yeah, when that like pause thing comes up again.
Need to.
I've got stuff on you I want to talk about.
Well, and we are obligated to provide some financial support. Look at what that includes.
I also think that if we're paying for them, they should probably be sent back.
Rita.
If they haven't used the whole twenty five thousand, it's their carryover.
Thank you.
Just went right by me.
You know, you know how.
Assuming we're gonna come right back to you. Save the best for last.
We need a stamp. No.
If you do, I'll laugh at you.
I know you will.
How did I miss the story on sled dogs? I mean, all these big things. I totally missed that story.
It was in the column. Yeah.
Gone. Should read it, but skip over a lot of stuff too. Thank you.
Hey ladies.
Miller, you're up for budget public hearing workshop.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. Commissioners, this was set on, I believe, last week's agenda or the week before's agenda for the Commissioners to set the public hearing date for the Valley County bu- uh, budget. There was some discussions if we were going to be moving the meetings from Mondays to Wednesdays. The Commissioners ultimately decided to move the meetings in the future to Wednesday. So what we are proposing now in the Clerk's Office is having the budget public hearing on August twenty seventh, twenty twenty five at one P M.
Cool. I have no problems with that. So I would entertain a motion to approve.
Removed.
Second.
I moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. We will make sure that we uh, provide that notice to the assessors. Uh, what happens now is that notice goes out to um, all of the members of the public that let me back up. It is a requirement that the Clerk's Office receives all of the taxing districts budget hearing dates by April thirtieth, and then we provide that information to the Assessor's Office. The Assessor's Office ultimately sends those out with the, the assessment notices. So then the public has an advance notice of when the taxing districts' public hearing dates are set. Um, so that's just kind of part of the process to share with the Commissioners. Uh, we will have, I think we have all of the taxing districts' bu- budget hearing dates. We will be providing that specifically to Didi Gossi. She will do what she needs to. And then again, as I indicated, ultimately that information will be sent out during the assessment notices.
Do you have a plan yet on when we'll start having budget hearings?
We have met with all of the departments and the elected officials except for, I think, two. Uh, we will begin having budget workshops with the elected officials and department heads within the next couple of weeks.
Think I'll put on the agenda to have a discussion about, you know, we've talked about doing one group of funding for all of the nonprofits.
Yeah.
I think I'll put that on and then we can all discuss it and see what everybody else's feelings are. So I'll.
Fantastic. Just let us know.
Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you.
Here you go, Sherri.
It's a stress ball.
I might throw it at you. I don't know.
I'll help you.
Sheriff Perry, you are up next.
Morning Commissioners. Three weeks in a row. Holy smokes.
You're always welcome.
Well, here we go. Three weeks on the same topic. Um, on, as far as the cars go, I guess the question for the Commission is, do we want to go ahead and save the extra forty five or five grand difference on what they usually do or not? I, I can go either way, to be honest with you. Um, I can tell you that, uh, I spoke with Clerk Miller. We kind of looked at things. And I do have enough in the Cascade fund to do one car. So.
We just have to pick up the other two.
One.
We're only doing two this year?
Yeah.
So what is the recommendation from the Clerk's Office? We had asked to get some background on where you think that that extra vehicle should be paid for because it's not in the budget.
Our options. Aye. I share capital fund. Any other? And equipment? But the county, it setting up that fund is shouldn't.
Other.
As for this time, one vehicle come out of the.
So now next year, you were talking about three more? Is that right?
So the recommendation out of C I P, I think that was coming, was to do five with two of those being out of the, what we're discussing right now.
Right.
So there would be three set aside in next year's budget.
And that would get us on to, that would get us on to par to where we're not back, almost a year all the time. Because like I said, it's not, it's not our budget. It's the time that they open up the tooling for police packages. And that's, that's, we're at the mercy of the, the manufacturers.
If we can get the two right now, we'd be okay.
It would get us on par and we'd, we'd stop dealing with it because we've been dealing with this for, I don't know how many years. Since COVID for sure. The COVID is where everything went just absolutely upside down.
And then also give me a recommendation on what the general fund or what the carryover would be that we could touch with that. And I'm saying that is I think the P I L T is getting low.
So Madam Chairman, Commissioners, it predict remaining cash right now is a little bit difficult. Um, but we can let uh, the Commissioners know that we will be getting our twenty fiscal year twenty twenty five P I L T payment probably in the next month to two months. In June is usually when we get that, um, those funds. Right now, the P I L T fund has one million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents.
Would be good to do that then.
Know that P I L T is gonna get.
Uh, payment that, Madam Chairman, my apologies. Payment that we will be receiving this fiscal year will be approximately uh, eight hundred and fifty thousand. Three hundred thousand of that will be uh, received into the general fund. Uh, and then the remaining will be going into the P I L T fund. So realistically, the P I L T fund should have a little under two million dollars by the end of G.
And then does another P I L T payment come in later in the year or is it just once a year?
It might be a little higher because of the fact we haven't been funded with S R S, but um, I know that we're gonna have to hit P I L T to complete that remodel down at the Cascade Annex. So I'm just a little sensitive to that P I L T fund. I guess if we have to, when we know a little bit more about carryover, if we have to, then we may have to utilize some funds for another.
Where are we at on general funds?
And what?
Where are we at on general funds?
That's what Doug's saying. It's hard to write at this point in time in the budget. It's hard to figure out where our carryover is. We have to have enough carryover to carry us from, you know, we get all of our, our income in July through the taxes. But then that has to carry us until our next payment in December. So that's the hard part when you're this midpoint range in the budget to make sure we have enough to carry.
I'll make a motion that we uh, we take enough money out of P I L T to buy the second vehicle.
Include that the first vehicle is paid out of the capital.
Yes, and what's the first vehicle being paid out of the?
It's the Sheriff's Capital Fund.
Sheriff's Capital Fund, yes.
I will second it um, with the caveat that they're purchased locally.
So that was the other question. There was, hadn't been a decision on whether it was Mountain Home Auto Ranch or.
I think Cascade was just really close with them. So
Yeah.
The only time there's a problem with that is when it's over ten percent. That, we have crossed that before.
So technically, just for the conversation, because I've had that conversation with our prosecuting attorney, the ten percent, and he said that's not valid or illegal. I mean, that was kind of a policy with county. But technically, you have to accept low bid when something comes in. So.
Well, then I'd like to see the expenses that it takes to take two officers down, to pick up two cars, to take a car down and.
We were very close.
Well, no matter what, the car gets shipped to uh, we don't pick them up here. They drop ship to the Salt Lake. That's where they're built. That's just.
And then they get transported back.
How? Then usually they're a truck or if somebody's going down there, we go get them. But usually they're shipping up here on it.
It doesn't matter which venue we buy them.
Yeah, we drop, they get dropped shipped.
Were they in value? Do you remember?
What's that?
Man, I think it was a couple thousand dollars.
Eighty-two, four, fifty-six to seventy-nine, nine oh four. However, I still think it's important to go locally for warranty work.
That one.
And if we're really trying to push our local economy, we need to support our local vendors.
Want to amend your motion? So I think.
I don't know how to amend.
You can amend it.
As long as we can legally buy.
That's my, and that's my thing. That's for the Commission on the budgeting thing. That is, that's legal to do. That's great, but that's.
It's the only piece I needed.
I don't know what's, I don't know what's legal there.
Let's table this and I want to reach out to our prosecuting attorney and see what we can do legally on these.
Now, Kevin, the other three that for next year, we would be able to take advantage of that six thousand dollar per unit? Or is that something that may or may not be available?
May or may not be available.
Kathy Hole was here last week, remember? And she said it was just another incentive because they weren't selling any. She doesn't ever think the forty-five hundred is gonna go away. They just added the two thousand on because the sales were not to the point that they believed they were to be. And I believe we just purchased two vehicles from Mountain Home Auto Ranch without a bid last time for the road department.
Which would be state bid.
And considering that they, but because I believe the discussion was that because each individual vehicle was under seventy-five thousand, they didn't need one. They didn't need to put it out to bid.
Right. I, I don't know. I know that we've been using state bid a lot. And then uh, there's been times Kathy can match state bid and there's times she can't.
And that time, two bids weren't even presented. For the two, three quarter tons, I believe. Correct, Clerk Mailer, for the?
We will table this. We will get back to it later this afternoon.
Okay.
And in the meantime, we'll get some direction from our legal. And then you have an M O U for agree, or for approval?
Yes, it's with the um, Public Safety Grant for the agreement to go forward in the next gen nine-on-one. Basically what that is, is we're getting into this next gen, which has very specific addressing requirements, which uh, our G I S person has been doing that very religiously for the last several years. We're, we're on top of it. But we're going on with Payette County, Washington County, Adams County, and us. And basically what it's doing is getting rid of this T one and trunking lines going into the next gen. And uh, what this is saying is that we agree to go in and we will share our information with G I S because it's one big system. And then they're gonna do it. And that's basically, and we're moving forward on the, on the grant, which will be taken care of for all five years.
But there's not a fee for us.
There's no money or anything into it. It's just, it's just the, hey, we're, we're gonna share information with everybody else at the table.
I would move that we approve the memorandum of agreement with Idaho Public Safety Communications Commission.
So in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
That's the state of Idaho.
State over there.
Data provider?
There you go.
Are, are your employees happy that the road's back open?
It's gonna be nice.
Those contractors did a good job. They got that done quickly.
Yeah.
They did. And that, when you see the pictures of what they've done, that was a lot of work. And everything, that was a lot of work.
Their first assumption was not until the thirtieth. So they got it open five days before they expected.
Thank you for doing those meetings.
Yep, happy to.
A lot of people are happy about it, that's for sure.
Okay, next up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up would have been Annette. She is out and she is saying, she told us that her department is running smoothly. Next up, uh, Director Phillips from Court Services.
Morning. What's going on with the McCall Annex? Um, on Thursday, I'm gonna be teaching at post. I'm gonna be teaching family engagement with the Department of Juvenile Corrections and how they can use that and connect with families better while they're in their roles there. Uh, Nikki Bai is my juvenile probation officer, connected up with law enforcement this past weekend for prom. Uh, I haven't heard about it yet, but I'm gonna assume no news is good news, but so she connected up with the McCall Police Department to do some patrolling and partnering with them. Uh, Steve's gonna be going to I C A D for training and then after he's gonna go on vacation and go to I C A D. It's for, that's for Idaho. I knew I should have written it down. But it's alcohol and drug dependency. I just can't remember what the C S for a conference on alcohol and drug dependency. Steve's gonna be out meeting with the community service partners, just building those connections, finding out how it's working, what's not working, to see what kind of adjustments we need to make. I do want to talk a little bit about um, just the McCall Annex, the building. I had sent uh, Madam Commissioner, Chairman, uh, kind of a McCall Police Department is doing an update in the lobby and it's really looking good. Uh, and then I would like to, if I can, mimic what they're doing on our building, um, or what we have to what they have. And if you look on the, the north side of the building, it's like black smears coming down the side and the front so pristine and pretty, same on the McCall side. So I requested uh, through facilities if they can come do a power washing. But uh, where the writing is there for the five, five fifty, uh, Dine Hard, the Valley County courthouse annex is on a side. There's a tree right in front of it. And you can't see it anyway, and it's all smeared and streaked as well. I am wondering with the permission of the Commissioners and if it's in my, my budget, if I can move the lettering. We can still have five fifty on that side. Uh, again, I talked with Scott Klingon about uh, cutting back some of that tree so we can actually see it. But then moving on the front of the um, building, so McCall on this side, it says the City of McCall and Police Department underneath it. I would like it to read, um, this, I think, uh, this is kind of how I like it to do. This is uh, Valley County Court Annex and Probation Services underneath it. So when folks know they're coming to the building, what they're coming to the building for. Um, it hasn't been a courthouse, even though it's going to be a backup for the courthouse if there's ever an issue down here. But there's um, lots of folks come in to want to do some kind of uh, interaction that this courthouse does and what all the building and what all the offices provide, and we just don't have that. So it uh, it just sends a mixed message. And then um, there's lettering right at the front door that says court services. I would like to change that to probation services. So it's all ties. And as soon as they come in the door, there's a sign that says McCall Police right here, probation services right here. So it's really consistent, looks nice. Um, just to mimic again what McCall City's been doing to that building. Um, because if not, we kind of look like the messy side of the house, you know? So um, anyway, I would like to bring that up for conversation, get permission to be able to do that. Um, I think um, Commissioner, uh, Madam Commissioner, you're gonna kind of let me know if I, if, how that looked and if you guys all agreed. That's one.
So Didi, is that, is that your guys' main entrance off the north side?
No, that, that's staff entrance. There's only one entrance to the public and that's that front entrance. So they all park in the front. Get a permission.
You know, this is not an action item. It's not on here for an action item, but it's, it's part of our maintenance of our buildings.
Yes.
And so as long as it's in a budget somewhere to pay for it, I don't have any problem with it. Although it needs to really be an action item. It's a
Right.
Building maintenance.
Just have Scott go over and do that.
I also want to just make sure you're okay with the lettering. It's your building. So I want to make sure the lettering is taking that courthouse annex off and just adding Valley County Court Service or Valley County, Valley County Court Annex, Probation Services. If that changes, let me know. I'm not running to do it right this minute.
What it's used for. Yep.
Say again?
More what it's used for.
Yes. Uh, the permission, the action item that's on here is for a cellphone. So I took myself a year. So when I was juvenile probation, I had a second cellphone. So whenever I knew there's a text or a phone call on that second phone to answer it, um, my own personal, I just don't get a lot of personal phone calls. Um, and I have uh, on the work phone, I would have my email, all that kind of stuff on my work. So last year, um, so the probation, the juvenile probation officer got that second cellphone uh, that I had had. And I just had one. And I do an incredible lot of business on my cellphone. Like right here, I've been texting back and forth, doing emails. It's on my personal device. I really struggle. I like my boundaries, so I know what work is and what isn't. Um, I also um, then worked with getting a, a laptop so I can have just work stuff on a laptop. Right now I have it merged with a personal laptop of my own, but that's coming. So I want a cellphone um, that I can separate business and personal off of. Uh, and talking with um, the I T, they have an old phone. I don't need a new phone. I'm not fancy like that. And he'd be willing just to give me that. So it's not gonna cost any extra. They already have it. It's just coordinating with him. Uh, but it was advised to me that I need to bring it to this council to make sure I can have a second cellphone. So uh, with your permission, I would like to use uh, that old cellphone that I T has for my, my work and not have to merge it with my personal.
Not a problem.
I would move that we approve the cellphone for court services.
Negative.
I'm moving in second. All in favor?
Excellent. Thank you. The only thing I'll just update you is that uh, Madam Commissioner gave me the okay to buy some plants. Again, without this, if I have extra money with my office um, supplies to get some just plants, um, just flowering baskets to put outside our building. So if I have extra money, I'll do that. But that's again, just aesthetics, if I have it.
Just water.
And water. Yes.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, sorry to interject here. Uh, the facilities does have a landscaping budget that you could initially access. Not have to use your supply budget.
I have a, I have a lot of ask of them already that I'd like to see done first.
They gotta come down and put the signs on there anyhow, so they might as well take care of your plant.
Well, he was actually down just the other day, kind of going through what we wanted in. So he seems okay with it. Oh yeah, I'll, I'll find out for sure if I can run that through his budget. Send him the bill.
Per view.
All right, that's it. Any other questions? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Director Hamilton, you are up. Remember, you still only get three minutes between the two of you.
And Allison Stat's here, uh, reporting out in four H, and then I have some programs as well.
Morning. Morning. All right. I'll be brief. Let's see, just a little catch up for the world of four H and staff working on projects. Uh, we weighed in forty-nine pigs the other day and that's a new record for Valley County. So working with maintenance, um I've I've got a ticket in with Scott. I need some equipment moved down there. There's a lot of um extra material that was left behind from the building of the arena, so that we can expand an area to have more space for the swine, to have an exercise area. So we're working on that and um right now we're at capacity, but believe it or not, it everyone should fit.
That's what I was gonna ask. At what point do we need to limit it?
Right, well.
We can have one animal.
Right. That might be something we look at in the future, like that they sell one animal. Um and then we have FFA on board too, so what would that look like? One animal with FFA, one animal four H. So those are our big questions we're working on, and I have met with the FFA teacher and
Until we can get facilities improved, it might just have to be capped.
I mean, do all all those pigs go through the auction?
No.
Okay.
Thirty-six.
I was gonna say that can take a long time.
Right, well.
Thirty-six, good also.
But because a lot of them are families and some of them are companions. If we have to organize space, it might look like they come in later to load on the truck, the companions. Um and they pay a separate companion fee, twenty dollars to get on the truck, twenty or thirty, anyway, to be able to ship their companion down.
Companion like a like a pet?
No, it's sometimes you get two pigs to keep one of them, to keep them, they're herd animals. They make their happy to have or not herd, but yeah, they like to be together. So you can raise two together and they'll do a little better and
Heard of two? A herd of two?
A herd of two. Well, it's a lot of families will consume one and then sell the other, so you're already raising pigs, you might as well. Um and then, let's see, working on the Fair Book to get that published um here in the next week or two. Um Shooting Sports Trailer, we're gonna do a fundraiser for that. Um try to bring awareness to the fact that we need a place to put everything that we got this grant for, so. And it is the same NRA organization that you're a part of, by the way, I looked that up. So that's great that we got the grant from them. Um and other than that, uh just we're moving forward uh in McCall. Sylvia and Amy are working on an awesome project with Strength Finders, but all the materials almost completed. We're we're gonna pilot that with a couple families, so it'll be a really good positive family program that we wanna put out. And um Donnelly After School is still going and Cascade After School Programs, and we're working on summer programming.
What is the theme this year for the?
Um it's paradise. Welcome to paradise.
Paradise.
Uh is the fair and the rodeo?
It's that first, yes, it's that first full week of August, but it's the fourth through the ninth.
When is the rodeo?
That ninth weekend, that eighth, ninth weekend.
And will will you be back for our three forty-five item?
Yeah, I saw that on there. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alice.
Feel free to say time's up if you need to. Um Arbor Day at France Witty was a tabling event with the Master Gardeners this past weekend, and that is a great event, and I get a lot of names of people interested in extension programs, and so I'm always appreciative of going to a tabling event that people are like, ooh, tell me more. Um Pride of the Pantry Plot Opening Day and Fence Construction is this weekend in partnership with uh Alzar School, which is gonna be coming out and helping us do a lot of construction work, and it's at the Cascade Food Pantry. And then we're doing Opening Day for the Bienvenidos Community Garden, May seventeenth, and I've worked with Dee Dee and Scott on uh the plan for that day and getting approval, cause we'll be shifting some fence lines. Doing a do it yourself drip irrigation day on May ninth, coming up next week at the Extension Office. May eighth, there is an AI, um how to use it in your personal life and work life discussion at the Cascade Cultural Arts Center that I'll be leading. And doing a pollinator workshop for all the sixth grade in McCall's uh this Friday, and that's a three-part series. And we have the SEEP training, which is the first time we're offering that in Valley County on May twenty-second and twenty-third at the EOC, and that is for people that are in construction or planning. And it is a certification, but they'll get a certificate. Right now only the city of McCall requires that certification. Um and so hopefully that will be well attended. That's in partnership with the Valley Soil and Water and the SEEP Program up in North Idaho. And it's the first time that they're offering it someplace not up in that area, so it's exciting to have that program come here. Um and I'm on the District Director Hiring Committee. Uh Dr. Mo Ma is going to be retiring. And so there'll be a new person in that that role, which is essentially the the oversight for our office in our in the Southern District, so the District Director. And that's what I have to report up. Any questions?
Can you do a second AI class up in McCall?
I can, yeah.
I think that would be a really positive thing for the community, something that's really starting to come up. Maybe even through the McCall Arts and Humanities or something.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Krista.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. Um Mike is actually interviewing this morning for a payroll specialist, so he will not be with us. So next up, Director Wilcox. You might wanna help Melissa figure out how we do this AI AI stuff in work. I wanna be retired by then.
I won't get into it now in any way, but I have my own thoughts on AI, but anyways. Um so I'm in things I've I've got, I'm more in communication uh with all the elected officials and department heads on um budget stuff, so I can try and get that uh finalized before the dead, the various deadlines and get all those approvals. Um still working with uh the Supreme Court to get, you know, they're still in that many transition, all of the individual, all the counties, the courtroom stuff to their own dedicated um network. They've had some hiccups, they've been working out and they've got them mostly worked out and I'm still working with them on that. Um my, I don't know if you saw this morning, I did send out an email um informing employees that we are ready to start transitioning to um an official dot gov domain for our emails, and I also send email to McKinsey to um do some public outreach to let everyone know that it's something that we're doing in the next few weeks, months. So I've been doing a lot of testing and making sure all that stuff is gonna work and be as smooth as possible, so.
Might work with McKinsey too. We're gonna have to do a mass order of business cards. New domains on them, so that might be something we need to roll out somebody a month or something. I don't know, Doug.
We could, and like I said, the the old email addresses will work for as long as we need them to, to give people time to do that, so.
Or maybe just as they replace their cards, then the email would be on them.
Yeah, they can do those updates, or if they have it in their budget to do it all at once now, and it's kind of up to them, so.
Why is it, and this may be a dumb question, but why does it always say County Valley ID? Why isn't it Valley County ID?
Well, now it is gonna be.
Oh, now it is gonna be.
But it's totally spelled out.
Yeah, the new domain is ValleyCountyID.gov.
Oh, I see.
Hopefully that'll be a lot clearer as to, and that follows, when you when you apply for these, they have certain standards that you have to meet depending what kind of a agency you are, as far as what that naming convention can be. And this is the the most common and and most clear to identify who we are and where we operate, all that kinda stuff, so.
I got a question for Jeremy. What is your take on all AI? Is that just something we'll be embracing down the road? Are you doing this?
So some people, and I will I will say, some people in the county employees have asked um to use various language models to to construct things. My um official response has been that, you know, we don't have an official policy around what, which, you know, various ones should or shouldn't be used and how they can or can't be used, so that's something I'm working on and wanna work through with legal to make sure that we have that in place before, um and people might be using them on the slide, you know, there's no way to know, but we should have that policy in place um before we go full tilt.
Is there some state or IAC recommendations on how to, you know, start using this within?
There are. I think that there, I think there was somebody from the um National Association that was at the conference over the winter that did some workshops around that specific thing, so.
We really need to put cybersecurity
Yeah.
front and center and
With cybersecurity and, um you know, I know that it's it's there, people are using it. It is a good tool for certain things. Regardless of my own thoughts on the matter, which I won't get into here.
You're an IT guy.
I understand the use cases, but I also, you know, I see the other side and and I read a lot of, you know, cybersecurity articles on how they could be misused and how they can be inaccurate in certain circumstances. So it's something we gotta be really careful, careful on, and I'm not fully opposed to it. I think it's be being pushed on on too many things too quickly, but that's that's just my own, my own opinion.
I think as we do our strategic planning, this is gonna have to be something that we include for the future because it is going to be a part of our future. And so we need to create steps that we need to follow in order to do it correctly.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm just curious. Thank you.
Those are the things that I'm working on, so unless you all have anything else, any other questions?
Uh I would like to just visit, um it doesn't have to be now, but you know, what large capital expenditures you see for any kind of upgrades to software this year? And is there gonna be a large expense and that type of thing? We've had to upgrade so many things in the last few years that have been a large part of our budget, that I'm hoping we can take a minute.
I think the biggest one, and it's already mostly budgeted for, is the building department. Um and we we did look at several of those and and those folks are reviewing all those again to sort of kinda make a make a final decision.
That's in this year's budget though, correct?
Yes, but it will bleed into next year, cause all, any any of these software plat platforms have ongoing maintenance costs associated with them, so even ongoing.
I think there was one for the Sheriff's Office from last year that we put off a year.
Yeah, I haven't spoke with Sheriff Capera yet, so I don't know if they want to um pursue try attempt, try and pursue civil again this year or um wait one more year, uh but I'll I'll have that discussion with the sheriff. But beyond those two things, again, because of the move to the to the to the Cascade, to the Cascade Annex because of the building of the new shop down Lake Fork. Um there's enough going on probably this next summer, in the next fiscal year, that I personally am not trying to do anything crazy or major until in in until all that kinda settles down and then maybe twenty-seven. There are some things I'd like to look at, but again, nothing so critical that has to be done right now, so.
More questions for Jeremy?
I'm good.
Director Herrick, finding and zoning.
Morning. I don't have a lot to report. Um administrative permits for short-term rentals are like four oh seven to four twenty-two. There's still some in flux. So it it slowly is ebbing up. But it seems to have, I mean it it's not the the great number that, you know, we saw in the past.
And we're not doing anything in the McCall impact area right now?
Not yet.
That would not include any numbers there, and I know McCall's not doing it either, and I don't know how many, have we gotten any numbers about how many are in there? We don't even, I mean, it's kind of an unknown right now.
It's extremely unknown right now.
Well, Cindy, is this an annual renewal they have to do every?
They have to do an annual renewal, but we have four hundred and seven solid short-term rentals. In the unincorporated areas outside the McCall impact area.
Right, so they have, and they have to come in every year and ask to renew.
Right, then people change, you know, properties and, you know, they sell, and then the the next people apply. But we don't include that in, you know, like new short-term rentals. They are just, that's the number of units.
And we charge fifty dollars to renew those fees, is that correct?
I think we raised that to seventy-five. Would have to, I think all the administrative permits are at seventy-five now.
Because we are discussing the impact areas right now, um we're currently doing all Donley and Cascade in their impact areas, whatever impact area they had. Um so we're requesting, just really quickly, on those, we're requesting that they um have a certain limit on the number of people there for septic concerns, correct? Um tell me what the requirements are that we look for.
If they have sewer, that they get a maximum of twelve people. If they only have two bedrooms, they get a maximum of four people per bedroom. So it's four people per bedroom. A maximum of twelve people if you're on sewer. Central District Health is based upon uh the number of bedrooms. You get two people per bedroom for a septic system, and nothing goes over twelve.
And then we check for parking, we check for setbacks.
Parking setbacks.
We're not doing anything on like smoke detectors or something?
No, exit plans. We want them to hang up an exit plan and hang up some uh emergency phone numbers. And we let the people in the area know that there's a short-term rental there. There there are a lot of uh criteria. They just, I mean, there are some things that we're using to can control the impact to the neighborhood.
That's good.
And then uh code compliance, he, I mean, he's getting out in the field a lot more now. He's gonna dedicate certain days so people know when to call in and talk to him. And he's driving around the county and finding things, you know. This is the time the real estate start, sides start springing up. And, you know, excavation companies are coming back and, I mean, we're, he's writing letters. He's he's busy. And then Lori and I are extremely busy on our meetings. I can, I mean, my big focus has been the impact areas for Cascade and Donley. Because that hearing is today, the comprehensive plan, and then, you know, our day-to-day and our public meetings. We're busy. Doing what we do. It changes every day. But it's hard to give a report on a consolidated thing.
That's the fun part of the job.
I know.
Never gets boring.
That's what's kept me here. Anything for me?
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Cindy.
Director Laxton.
Morning. Commissioner, Commissioners. Mark Miller, nice haircut. So AI. A couple months ago, I tried to write a letter using AI to the ISSA on my personal laptop. I haven't laughed so hard in my life after that thing printed the letter out. It had nothing to do with what I was talking about. I just basically X that out and walked away from it.
Take Melissa's class.
Yeah, and from what I understand, I I talked to another uh individually, I said, you just gotta do over and over and over again, and it'll learn, and then pretty soon it'll understand. So um
You can be retired before you have to learn that too.
Oh, I'm not, I'm gonna keep going at something. I mean, you can't quit, you quit and your mind quits working. So the um new Cascade groomer should be here Thursday. Here's another little check mark, once that thing makes it in. We've already moved the old groomer and some of the parts over to the to the road department, cause it would be better to swap those out there than in the middle of West Mountain Road. Um so that's a, that's a good thing. Uh lava restoration at Snake Nelly uh project, I I'm I'm trying to make comments on them. I'm reading them. I've gone over them and over and again. The problem is, the only thing I can see that's a concern is they're talking about getting rid of some social trails, which mean trails that were built by the public that aren't really approved by the Forest Service. And of course, our comment has always been to at least analyze them to see if they can be a permanent, access a permanent trail. But if they wait on the project to where we can see those things, and then all that timber's gonna go bad, so for the first time, I'm gonna back away from that comment right now, and just, I don't think there's anything else for it to affect. They just gotta get up and get the job done now.
Well, if the so, if the public built them before, they're probably gonna build them again if they
I I, yeah.
There's a reason to have them there.
I'm sure. I'm sure you're right, but I, you know, as always, we're always worried about reduced access. We got a growing population and a reduced access. And that's a uh problem. I talked to Council District and and Yash over there is really working hard to get some of those roads that were and trails that were closed because the fire back opened. And like you said, it really isn't the fire that did the damage. It's some of the um uh bulldozers and equipment they hired to go up and and uh and and open some stuff up. That's where a lot of the damage is. We're gonna help uh with with the Council District. We're gonna take over that little four corners uh We're gonna help uh with with the Council District. We're gonna take over that little Four Corners uh facility, the the um CXT, keep it clean, keep the toilet paper in it, because they, they've lost all their all the two of their recreation people, and we're up there anyway quite often, so. I'm gonna talk to the club and see if they can get up and get that done for us.
Brad?
Uh, it's called Little Five Corners, actually. It's up no, up no business, and then you turn where it goes to uh the Radar Dome. It's up there on the corner right up. We installed that, ooh, my gosh, four or five years ago.
That's gonna be the club doing that, not our?
Yeah, it'll be the club. We'll, we'll just make sure it happens. It's just, that's the main thing is always keeping the eye on the ball. McCall, we're, we're done with the Donley maintenance. There's, there's actually a leak in the uh, in a radiator. We're gonna have to pull that later on and re- resolder it and and we can do that. It's not, it's not a big deal. We'll probably do that this fall, but the Donak has done. Um, we're starting the McCall maintenance, and that'll be done this week, and then we'll have all of our seasonal guys will be off. Uh, this afternoon, we've got uh five-thirty's Advisory Board Meeting in Lake Fork, and Thursday is the BFC. I got these two. And then we have some papers to sign. This is actually three documents, even though it says it's one. It's uh um lot funds, and they broke it out for five thousand dollars to Brush Creek. This is for snow removal. Five thousand dollars for Francie Wallace, three thousand dollars for Green Gate.
That's the, the city of McCall?
Yeah, City McCall Lot Fund, and I just need it signed.
So there, that's read every paper.
That's money they're giving us, Larry? That's money that they're giving us.
Yeah, that's funds that are coming to us and it'll go in Budget Thirty-nine.
Larry, is this already funds that we were approved for, or is this the upcoming?
This is approved for, we've
Okay, so this is a reimbursement, if you will.
Approved them, voted them in. They've said they've got the funds and ready to send them to Clerk Miller and we just got to get them the documents. Total of thirteen thousand dollars, which is really good. If we have another year like last year, boy, we got beat up on Snow Removal Bad last year.
Were you guys just farming it out to?
Uh, we do as much as we can. Uh, we got the front-end loader up in, up in McCall, so we do up in Francie Wallace. We try to do as much, but we can't keep up. It's just, it's just constant, gotta get hit sometimes twice a day.
And you, I mean, how's that work hiring it out to uh contractors?
Uh, we've got one guy that has helped us for, oh my gosh, I bet he's been doing it for ten years now. And um it's kind of where we are right now. Just call him on when it's time to, when it gets deep enough and everybody complains enough. Of course, the problem is, is like we've discussed on anything new. Yeah, you can go over there and plow it in the morning. But unless you have something available to come in in the afternoon in case you get a foot and a half, two feet of snow, you're gonna get the public complaining an awful lot about being stuck. They come up with big trailers, big trucks, and big summer tires.
That's exactly what they do. Every time.
You're stupid. Do you need a motion to sign that, since it's an action item? Sorry. One step ahead.
I just looked at it. I would move that we approve the local option tax funds agreement.
Second.
It moved in second, I'll in favor.
Hi.
Somebody put something on my face on my assignment.
And like everybody else, we're working on the budget. We've already had a good meeting on, of course, thirty-two is, is the one that's complicated for us. That's the recreational budget. The other three budgets are snowmobile, and that is, once it's done, that money rolls over. And we just wait for IDPR to send us our numbers, and they promised we'd have numbers by July first. So by July second, Doug will be waiting at the door.
Cool.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'll see you down there today.
Oh, you betcha. See you later.
Director Hulovecik, wildfire mitigation.
Morning.
Your time's about ready to ramp up.
Yeah.
There's been a lot of questions out on Facebook about whether we're gonna have Woody biomass bins out.
Yes, and I sent out that message on Facebook because there's been so many questions, and I spoke with Scott Klingon. They are still accepting the Woody debris up at the dump during closed fire season, so that's between May tenth and October twentieth. Um, so they'll still be accepting that. It's residential only, that's free. Um, anything with stumps and or commercial loads will be charged as usual. Um, so that service is still gonna be obviously offered, and that's been the big hiccup is they said no residential dump days, and that's for like the large bridges and stuff like that typically, so it was just miscommunication through the public, really.
The bins will be out too.
The bins, so we do have bin scheduled, but that's for the end of May, so it's May twenty-fourth through June fifth for the Bring It, Don't Burn It bins. And those are gonna be facilitated at the fire departments again, and then we have some in the fall. So those will still be there too, it's just a little ways out. Um, this Saturday is Wildfire Preparedness Day, May tenth, at Donley Fire from eleven to two. Um, there's a lot of booths, a lot of activities. We have a lot of public engagement already. Um, we're gonna have Free Firewise Plants, Smokey the Bear. All the fun things. Also working with the Fireworking Group on May sixth to do a final CWPP update. Um, so we're finalizing the CWPP, which then we'll present to you guys as well um for final approval. And we're gonna be doing the Response Committee the same day, so it's kind of a dual meeting day. Does sound like you'll, you'll be there. Um, but I'll send you guys a link for that right now, um, when I get back down to my office, so you guys can review it. Um, I'm requesting all edits by May first for the CWPP. And so what the CWPP is, is the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. It's the document that's needed to apply for all the grants that I apply for. So all these mitigation grants, this is the base, the foundation of that. Um, also working with the Fireworking Group on an evacuation map. Um, and a study with the sheriff and uh the emergency manager, so we've been working with BSU to do a study of how all of Cascade got evacuated last year and how they got their information, whether they evacuated or not. Um, just kind of do an overall real pulse on what the messaging happened last year and whether they got the message, really.
Whether it worked.
Yep, whether it worked. Um, so that's happening. I think it'll be in the next month. They'll start sending those out to every homeowner down in Cascade, if you're in a zone or not. And it's gonna be kind of random because they want to do quite a few in this zone, quite a few in this zone, and then random on the outskirts just to kind of see what everyone's perception is.
Now, are they sending those through the mail?
They are, and that's all through their grant, so it's nothing that the county is paying for. It's just being facilitated with specifically the emergency manager and the sheriff, since the sheriff is in charge of evacuations. So we've just been looking over all the questions, um, where they should be sending the, the mailer out to um, and what kind of things they should be targeting.
Are those twenty mails still being held and checked?
So that is with the Allands partnership, and yes, that has not been awarded again, so it was awarded a while ago. And so that's completely different funding, but that's for implementation, and they have not received that funding. So that's still very unknown on whether that's gonna occur or not.
The emails to our congressional delegation.
Yep.
Not giving us SRS either, so what the heck?
Yes, so there's that component too, which comes into my next point, is the Firewise Grants. We actually had seventy applications this year. Last year, we only had forty. So we had thirty more this year. To fund every application, we would have to have two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to fund every application. With that, there's a diverse amount of grants, right? Some are just large tree removal, and one tree can cost two to five grand, and we don't typically fund those. Usually, it's that smaller tree component, limbing trees up, reducing the fuel loading that we cover with those grants. But it kind of gave you a scope of really the need, and the reason why for large trees, because insurances are dropping because of large trees really close to people's houses, so.
So you'd have to you'd have to procure two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars worth of grants?
To fund every single application, yes, but we only allocate fifty grand every year for these funds. And so like last year, we only funded about thirty-two of those applications. So we have a board of fi- five of us, four of us, that go out and meet with every application. Look at their project, come back and kind of decide who should get what grant. And it is a fifty-fifty match, so the county matches half of whatever they fund. So they do have to come out with some of their own money, and all that's tracked, um, reimbursed through the clerk's office um, before and after photos are taken as well.
Because we have not been funded with SRS, do we have the fifty this year?
We do. We already allocated it from last budget season, correct? It's just going in the future, whether we will obviously, if we do not get funded, this is a um program that will have to go away. One thing that's nice about this program too it's, it shows me where there's a lot of interest. So there might be a subdivision that has like ten people that are interested, and that's where I apply, apply for a large grant the next year. And so that's what's really nice about this, is really that out outreach component. So we might not fund every application just because we don't have that funding, but it allows me to that individual engagement, and then knowing how many people need work right there.
Well, if you had ability to fund them all, would you have the ability to get them all done?
Yes.
Oh, you would?
Yes.
These are explain the process a little bit, maybe more.
So with the Firewise Grants, it's up to the landowner to hire the contractor. We help facilitating by doing inspections, so it's kind of the opposite of what I do with my, my grants. So it's really on the landowner to identify the project, lay out their project, hire that con- contractor. Where my large grants, I go out there, lay out the unit, um, hire the contractor, et cetera. So it's kind of the opposite. Um, so that's why we're able to get more acres done with that one, because it's more of that landowner having that ownership.
You can get to work?
Yes. Neverending. But yep, those are the main things that I'm working on right now, so yeah, the Fireworking Group CWPP is the really the backbone right now that I'm focusing highly on. Um, the main reason is, is all that funding starts in October, so I want to do some public outreach for it. Um, you guys also have to approve it, and then we're gonna go take it to every city um as well and do a little presentation on it.
Is this something you kind of have to plan a year and advance? Is that kind of where you would like to be?
I am gonna be updating it yearly, so that it's not such a big process like it has been. I've been working on this since June of last year. And that's because I wrote, wrote it um for the Fireworking Group. I do have a lot of participation that's editing, adding their projects, because that's a big part of it, is getting the Forest Service projects. Um, the city's projects, the county's projects, all input into this, and their involvement in what the document actually says. So, but most time, most counties uh contract this document out, but.
And it's required every five years?
It's required every ten years to actually do an update, but we're putting on a five-year cycle to put it on the same cycle as the All-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Because most of the people that are in both plans need to have input on both plans, so that's why I've been working with WAN to put them on the same cycle. And then update the projects yearly, because that's kind of the hardest thing to update, is those project completions. So that's kind of my goal, is to do it yearly, so the five years, it doesn't take as much time.
Any questions? Perfect. Even into that season.
Yep. Thank you, guys.
Chainsaws are warmed up.
Yep. Bye.
Thanks, Mara.
All right, while we are done early, we will take.